Mayor Bishop.
Well, let me call the meeting to order. All right, here we go. We're gonna do it for real this time. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, let's go ahead and get a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temloa.
Here.
Council members Olson.
Here.
Ben Corr.
Here.
Hannah Kahn.
Here.
We have a form.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Pro Temloa, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
Yes, sir. Thank you. With me, with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here. So this takes us to item number four, Presentations. Four point one, we're gonna, we're gonna declare Women's History Month. So March is Women's, is Women's History Month, a time to reflect on and celebrate the many contributions that women have made throughout history. From trailblazing leaders to everyday heroes, women have played a vital role in shaping our society and advancing the cause of gender equality. This month, let's take the time to honor the achievements of women, past and present, and to all rededicate ourselves to building a more inclusive, equitable world for all. So with that, we have a couple council members or council, councilwomen on our council. I'd like to see if they have any words they'd like to share.
I just want to thank you for taking the time to recognize Women's Month. Women actually populate more than half the population of the United States, and you know, women fill a lot of roles in careers, but we're also moms, we're sisters, we're daughters. We fill a lot of roles, and it's nice to be appreciated and to be recognized, and I want to thank you for taking the time to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. So we're gonna move on to four point two, Declaring Employee Appreciation Day. So Employee Appreciation Day is March first, two thousand and twenty-four. It's a day that is dedicated to recognizing and celebrating the hard work and contributions of employees in the workplace. To all of our hardworking and dedicated employees, I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for everything you do. Your commitment to our organization and your valuable work ethic is truly appreciated, and we couldn't do it without you. Thank you for your contributions and enthusiasm. You make our workplace better every day, and we are so grateful to have you on our team. Keep up the great work. I think it's no secret that this council is very proud of the work that the staff does here at the city of Palmdale. We have an excellent city, and it reflects in the work product that the staff does. So thank you very much. Any council members like to add to that or build on that?
I just want to say thank you to staff, because not only are they great, but every day that they come to work, they achieve to be better. And you don't find that in a lot of organizations. These, these, these staff members come to work every day and put a hundred and ten percent into everything they do, and, and I just really appreciate it.
Yes, we all do. Thank you very much. And we know that, that sometimes the workplace these days isn't exactly the easiest environment, but we appreciate the staff and the team overcoming those challenges and, and giving us their best. So thank you very much. All right, four point three is the Wellbeing Lab Certificate in Applied Positive Psychology Program Update. And we have some updates from staff, and Louis is here as well. Mr. Louis Allegro.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Good afternoon.
That is how my day has gone. Good evening, council. Good evening, good evening. I needed that little bit to relax. So we are here tonight to present an update on the certificate in Applied Positive Psychology Program. The city engaged in this program back in two thousand and twenty-one, where we held the first cohort. Um, we recently finished the second cohort at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, and we bring you some information about that cohort, the program, I mean, the, the impact projects that the participants created. And Louis will also be who is our instructor for the Wellbeing Lab. He will be providing a little bit of information as well. So we begin by saying, what is mental health? So mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, and it affects all of us, right? As individuals, our families, and our workplaces, the community. And that is something that is a very high focus right now, right? In the world overall, um, mental health. And so here are some statistics from the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Um, one in five U.S. adults experience mental illness, one in twenty adults experience serious mental illness. Um, also, NAMI reports that fifty percent of all lifetime mental illnesses begin by the age of fourteen, and increase to seventy-five percent at the age of twenty-four, with seventeen percent of youth between the ages of six to seventeen years experiencing a mental health disorder. So this basically confirms, right, that mental health is not only adults. It starts at an early age, and it's important to continue advocating and providing programs that fit the needs of all in mental health. Um, more information locally here to, to the Antelope Valley. Um, and this information is from the Department of Mental Health. Um, the following demographics data is based on clients receiving services funded by the Mental Health Services Act from the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health. And this is by fiscal year. Um, this includes L.A. County directly operated programs and or contracted programs. The services include assessments, case management, crisis intervention, medication support, peer support, and other rehab services. And as we see here, overall, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, were over fourteen thousand overall, and that is number of clients, and then the yellow indicates the number of new clients during that fiscal year. We also see an increase in twenty-two, twenty-three, and for twenty-three, twenty-four, it reflects up to date. So if we look at that, you know, we still have some months left in this fiscal year, so it is assumed projected that number is going to increase. But this is reflective, too, of who is seeking services, right? It's not reflective of all that actually need services and are not receiving the services. Looking at these numbers, we can assume that there's a higher number of the ones that are not yet receiving services. And then if we look at it broken down in the, the numbers in the previous slide, we can look at it here as adults red, child is yellow, um, older adult green, and then the transitional age group is the last bar. And we can see the breakdown of that. Um, you know, it continues to increase, and like I said, twenty-three, twenty-four, we don't have all the numbers yet. The following slide demonstrates, you know, the number of days unable to work due to mental health problems. These numbers are from two thousand and twenty-two. We, they didn't have numbers for two thousand and twenty-four yet. And then there's adults seeking help for mental, emotional, and or alcohol drug issues. Antelope Valley is Spa One, so you see that we are above average. And based on the previous slides demonstrating, um, those numbers, we can assume that this number is probably higher, um, now currently, two thousand and twenty-four. And then when we think about this, when, when people are experiencing mental health issues, they are not productive, right, members of society, unable to work and often seek out coping strategies that further increase their challenges. Uh, you know, for example, you know, some may, may seek drugs or alcohol, and they're, you know, it limits their capability to, to be well, which it causes a ripple effect, right? Because it's not only the individual that is experiencing the mental health situation. It trickles down to your family, to your community, to the world, right? So it's like all of us have a, a grain, right, in the well-being of the world. And so when we are not doing well individually, it does affect, and a lot of times, you know, the family is going through the same, um, crisis, right? Not maybe feeling themselves, but you, your loved one is going through that. You are experiencing that as well. So you have a household of four or five people. It's not just one person that can be counted. You would be counting four, because all of that is impacting them as well, right? There's children in the house. If an adult is experiencing mental health issues, that child is experiencing that as well, and as they get older, right? That may continue with them. And so, you know, when we think of mental health, it's not just a study of weakness and damage. It is also the study of strength and virtue. Treatment is not just fixing what is broken, it is nurturing what is best within us. Sometimes, you know, there isn't a magic pill or something that's gonna reverse things. It's truly, how do we learn to struggle through those times, but struggle well, right? To get through those times. And that's what brings us to this, um, presentation of the certificate in Applied Positive Psychology. Because there is not a, you know, it's not one mold. Mental health needs have to be addressed in many different ways, um, the needs of each individual. And this is, you know, not a fix for all, but definitely is making a difference in our community. And I'm gonna invite Louis Aloro, who is our, our instructor for, for the CAP class, to share a little about, um, what the program is and what the participants gain from going through the program.
Good evening. Thanks for, thanks for having me here tonight. Thank you, Nardi, for setting that up so well. Um, I won't go too, too long for you, but I just wanted to say that, um, as Nardi said, there's a, there's a percentage of people who need traditional clinical treatments for their mental health supports. This is not in place of that. This work, uh, this well-being work is to supplement some of those more traditional clinical treatments to help provide coping strategies for people who are just living their life. Maybe some of them are, we call kind of okay. Um, we say in this work that just because you take away someone's mental illness doesn't necessarily leave them well. So what are the tools and strategies, skills and strengths that help people have well-being in their lives? We use an evidence-based approach, this perma-model that my teacher, Dr. Martin Seligman, has published about ten or twelve years ago. It is a framework that helps us organize a series of activities, interventions, that help people, um, apply to their own lives personally, um, relationally in their family lives, relationally in their work lives. They can apply some of these tools in those places, and their faith-based, based lives, and their community lives. There's applications are pretty endless in, in, in using this type of framework. We did a survey here in two thousand and twenty-one. We did it again in two thousand and twenty-three, um, looking at the state of well-being in Antelope Valley. Um, you know, some people are, are thriving, some people are well, some people are living well despite their struggles. Um, some people are really struggling. So I just put, point, point out here that there are many ways to think about how people are doing in this community, right? It's not just that people are struggling with severe mental illness. There are some people who are struggling with slight mental illness or slight mental health challenges. And so in, in support of all of the people here in the Antelope Valley, we have this intervention, this certificate of Applied Positive Psychology. We've trained so far about eighty, um, community members, community leaders, residents, concerned citizens, we say. Some of our, our, our students, um, um, are in that category. Um, and so we have a very diverse group of people who come for this, this, um, course. It's an eight-month course, uh, where six months they're learning Applied Positive Psychology, um, and then the final two months they're executing on their impact projects. And so our course is part onsite, you know, you came at the end of last, uh, at last cohort. Um, part of it's online that we do through Zoom. It's intensive. It's a commitment that people make to participate in something over time. It's not once and done, and that's intentional, because we're helping them build a mental and a social emotional muscle. So this is what it looks like. And, um, I did want to say that there are, um, outcomes of this program that are still sending ripples through the community. These are the Community Impact Projects, where students and participants are coached through, um, um, identifying a demographic group that has a need, um, looking through what that need might be, and how some of the perma-tools and concepts can help support, uh, people in that particular demographic. Here's a, a sampling of what some of the projects were that came out of the class this past year. So you could see the demographic groups in parenthetical notes. And I just have a couple people here that, um, worked on these projects, and just want to give you their, their, um, word about what they did. So I have Jessica Albernaz here from the Palmdale School District, um, who's gonna speak for a few minutes on what she did and why.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this was a tremendous, uh, program that I was able to be a part of, and I really enjoyed, uh, obviously, learning from Lois. And, um, my impact project was the Wellbeing Club, which I finished last semester, but this semester I started with a cohort for parents. So it's still a work in progress. We try to give them the perma-pillars, how to function on a daily basis, uh, present to them well-being, and for myself, it was just a huge blessing. So thumbs up for this program.
Thank you. Patty, Lenita, do you want to say anything?
Hi, I'm Patty, and my project was the one called Bank of Perma Workshop. What we did was, we presented to the seniors over at the Legacy Commons Center. We did six sessions over there. We took one of the perma-pillars each time to train everyone. I do feel that based on, um, our metrics, that we did make an impact over there. We had a few people that gave us some good information, such as, um, one gentleman said that he had reconnected with his, uh, son, his estranged son. I thought that that was a great impact. We had another person that, um, spoke about her, her illness. She, she had some issues and that she started coming to the classes and couldn't wait for the next class to begin. We also had another woman that had an issue with, um, her own personal life. She had trauma with, with a relative, and she also found out that she was having heart surgery that was going to be coming up. And she said that if it wasn't for these classes, she wouldn't have been able to face those things. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, Tanisha, do you want to say anything? Because you're here too, just, yeah. Thank you. Tanisha worked on, um, a project for, um, families that were grieving the loss of loved ones.
Hi, my name is Tanisha, and I was blessed to be a part of this cohort. Um, I got some tremendous tools, and I took those tools and went to the community. And so, um, with those tools, we gave people in the community, um, like, little things to help them cope. Sometimes during grieving, you know, journaling helps, um, art therapy, painting, and, um, just various other tools that we got from our perma, and we shared with the community, and then they in turn went and shared with their families. And it was a ripple effect, all positive.
Thanks, Tanisha.
So as the participants have shared, right? They learn, but they also take it back out into the community, into their workplaces, into their homes. You know, I went through the program too, and I have to say this morning, I got up and it wasn't one of my best mornings, right? I, I was thinking, you know, I gotta go to work, but I have a lot of other things in my mind too, and I had to take a deep breath. And I had to remember one of the activities we learned, which was one of the tools we gained, which was a jolt of joy, right? So I took the time to think of something that brought me joy, and that made me understand, okay, you can get through this day, Nardi, right? Because I think everybody in this room has those days. Life is not perfect. We deal with a lot of different things on a daily basis. You know, even sometimes the weather might make you feel like you don't want to get out of bed. And, and we all impact each other. And so, you know, I know I am grateful for, for the council having, um, you know, approved this back in two thousand and twenty-one, and the two new opportunities that are being received. I think it's great to hear the community, right? Because we are making a difference in the community and in lives, and I think it's, um, it's changing lives, right? This is not something they learn and they walk away from. It's something they're learning and they're taking with them and, and, and sharing it with others. Um, so we are grateful that, you know, tonight, the council approves the contract that's gonna be on later on in, in the meeting, that there'll be a third cohort, and there'll be another, you know, thirty to fifty participants in the community that will be taking this back into, into our community, our community, to, to improve our well-being. And the applications, if everything is approved, will be opened, um, as of tomorrow through March thirty-first. And, um, it's on our website. This is also the link, and here is as well the QR code. Um, we encourage, you know, whoever is interested to, to apply, because it is a great program to, to go through.
Is that just for the residents of Palmdale? And is there an age limit on it? Like, how young, how old?
There's no age limit. I'll let you speak to the, for the, uh, the residents, but, uh, there's no age limit. Um, we would like to have, we'd like to have a diverse group of people. Um, we would like some more younger people in this next class.
Okay.
Teenagers, you know, um, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, perfect age to participate in this program.
Great, thank you.
No, it, it is not open only to residents of, of Palmdale. It is the Antelope Valley. Um, so, you know, we are all engaging together, and it is important, right, for organizations in our community to, you know, to send or, or have some of their own employees participate, because they bring this back into the community. And so, and into their workplaces. So we are, um, definitely looking at, you know, seeking for our big order, you know, stakeholders in the community to also have, um, their employees participate through this program. It'll make a difference. Any questions?
Yeah. Counselor Collins?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Bishop. I just want to say thank you, uh, to both of you. Uh, one for leading and facilitating, uh, this course and for your passion, Nardi, uh, in keeping it alive. Uh, without the two of you and your leadership, um, this, 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 this program would really not be where it is today. It is a hidden gem in the city of Palmdale. Every person that I have spoken with that has gone through this curriculum has said it was nothing more than transformative for their life. They wished they had gone through it sooner. They encourage everybody that they ever come across, uh, with to, to sign up and participate in it. When I had the opportunity, uh, at the end of, uh, your program, each, each, uh, impact group gave a presentation, I was so moved to tears, literally, uh, several times throughout the, the couple hours that I was there. The work that you guys are doing is remarkable, and you are all to be commended, and I encourage as many people who are listening, watching, here, spread the word, sign up, fill out an application. It's very much worth your time and your investment. It will transform your life. So thank you to you both.
Thank you, Louis. Thank you, Nardi. Thank you, stakeholders for coming and sharing your testimony on your experience and how it works. Uh, it's definitely been a benefit to our community. This program emerged, uh, I think, I believe during or right after the pandemic, and it couldn't have come at a better time, and people needed this kind of support more than ever. So, um, with that, yeah.
Say a few words?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, to witness the cohort, I know that the individuals have participated, committed eight months of their lives. I can't even commit to anything next week. So it's amazing the work that you do and the commitment that you have to better yourselves, and that betters the community. Like that, uh, the chart of the ripple effect of mental illness, it's also a ripple effect of positivity. When your lives change, you also change the lives of everybody around you. And I fully support this project. I understand your point about this being open to all Antelope Valley residents, because we want a stronger Antelope Valley. I would be open for funding from the other cities and county entities involved.
Yes.
But one last point, um, in the Antelope Valley, adults seeking help for mental or emotional alcohol and drug issues is over the average.
It's over the average.
But number of days unable to work due to mental illness is under the average, which makes sense, because this is a blue-collar community, and struggles are real. And just because you're going through something emotionally doesn't mean that financially you can afford to take that time off. What I'm trying to say is people are suffering, and you don't know it. So just be kind.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, yes.
So thank you for everything you do. I appreciate it.
That was well said. Richard, I know this is something that's near and dear to you.
Right, very, uh, quickly, thank you, all of you, by the way, for what you're doing. And everything has a, has a positive effect on this really enormous problem that we're facing everywhere, but particularly here. And many of the families are the ones that are saddled with dealing with this, because there's limitations in the law in what can be done to treat someone who doesn't want treatment, right? So we have some acute problems that exist out there that our society simply isn't dealing with, resulting in homelessness, right? Tragically, and widespread. Um, this city has recog, this city council has recognized that problem and has budgeted money to address that issue, to try and assist families that are facing this problem. And we're working diligently with, uh, providers, uh, in this area and with Los Angeles County, uh, to do something about it. But what you're doing is, is fantastic, uh, and the, and the city's committed to grappling with this very, very enormous problem in our community. So again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. All right. Think we may or may not be talking about this later, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So that's gonna move us on to, uh, Adam, Presentations. So we're gonna move on to public comment. But before that, City Manager, are there any items to pull from the agenda tonight? Okay, thank you very much. City Clerk, can you please play the Public Comment Code of Conduct into the record, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move to public comments, and City Clerk, will you read the public participation statement to the record?
Now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar, section six. I have two speaker cards, Mayor and Council.
All right.
They are David Harris and Eugene Hernandez.
Hi, David. Good evening, good evening. Uh, I'm here to speak on six point eight, uh, approving-
Uh, I'm here to speak on six point eight, uh approving the agreement on the well-being of what we just heard. And positive emotion, engagement, relationship, well-being, accomplishment, meaning. Meaningful and health, right, are all keys to a positive community. Uh, CDC USA Community Development Center USA fully backs this as uh one of our key partners. Um, uh did participate in the last course, not me, but one of our participants did. And she has done an amazing job in delivering program, uh utilizing the man's Anita House, as a matter of fact. Uh, so, um, fully endorse this this and uh maybe I should take it.
Yes, you should.
All right, thanks, David. All right, Eugene.
Yes, um regarding Women's History Month, I would bet none of of you councilmen would know any Chicana leaders. Because Women's History Month just seems to focus on white women and black women in our history. But our, but our Chicano his- Chicanas are never recognized during this month. For instance, Emma Tenayuka was a sixteen-year-old Chicana labor leader in San Antonio, Texas during the Great Depression. And she led a strike of five thousand workers of of Pecan Shellers. And was had had to leave Texas because the Ku Klux Klan and the white establishment were out to kill her. Second, another Chicana leader was Alicia Escalante, which I know none of you know. She was one of the leaders in East L.A. who organized welfare workers. And she made it possible for DPSS to put their information uh in Spanish and English. Another leader that you probably don't know is um Alarcon's aunt, Evie Alarcon. Who was a great leader in the San Fernando Valley who ran for political office. So, our Chicana leaders are never recognized. It's only black and white leaders during Women's Month. But that is a serious neglect of our history and our culture. Thank you.
Sure.
Just really quickly, since you mentioned my aunt, yes, thank you for acknowledging my aunt. She was uh the co-chair of the Cesar Chavez uh Holiday Committee. And is the reason why the state of California formally recognizes the Cesar Chavez Holidays. So yes, I am fully aware of several Chicana leaders uh who have uh had a tremendous impact on our community, including my aunt. So thank you for recognizing that.
And I just wanna say that um Women's History Month and Women's Month in general is not just for leaders um that are female. But really to recognize the uh com- commitment to community, to family. Um, there are some great leaders in their own homes, in their churches, in their communities, although they don't hold an official public title. Um, you can't really appreciate the effort that women of every walk of life, from every income level and from every race. The the struggles that women do go through to to succeed and to be good wives, good sisters, good mothers, you know. It's um it's every woman everywhere that we're celebrating this month. So I just wanted to make that clear, that it's not just for people that are involved in political office or activists. It's for every single woman and all of their struggles and all of their successes. I just wanna take my hat off to every woman um for everything that they do.
No more speaker cards on this item?
All right, thank you, Madam Clark. All right, council members, would you like to pull any items from the consent calendar? Anything to pull from the consent calendar?
Sorry, excuse me, um, yes, may I please pull item six point five?
Okay, six five. Is that it, or do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the remainder?
I have a motion, second. Go ahead and vote in the computer, when ready.
Oh, do I have to?
Motion second by computer and then?
No, cuz she asked.
She didn't motion, I know. There's no more. Oh. Oh, the one that we seconded, I don't know.
You give her a second, so.
But it must've it must've said I did the motion, cuz it told me to run. I didn't touch the screen.
I think she's trying to put it in on her end.
Start voting.
Thank you. I think we're moving a little too quick for the city clerk. Okay, six five, did you have a question, or do we need a staff report on that?
Can we just get a a brief staff report, just an overview, and then I I just a follow-up, couple things?
Hi, Lynn.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Lynn Glidden, I'm the Director of Public Works. Item six point five is awarding a landscape maintenance services agreement with Parkwood Landscape. In the amount not to exceed of sixteen point one two million for the remaining three months of this fiscal year. And subsequent four fiscal years for a total contract of fifty-one months. Uh, this agreement, um, over the past twenty years, the city has contact contracted these services in some capacity. To meet the increasing maintenance requirements and community expectations. Uh, during the previous soli- solicitation, the city council directed staff to address enhanced oversight and contract compliance verification. Therefore, these components were put into the RFQ. Uh, landscape maintenance services include uh turf mowing, edging, detail, detaching. I'd like to point out, this is also for just our general benefit areas and our LMD areas, not our park areas. That will be forthcoming later this year. Uh, including, some of the work including pruning, re- uh rejuvenation of shrubs, litter control. Uh, tree maintenance, cleaning, flow lines, gutters, et cetera, a lot of extra work. The city released this proposal in September twenty twenty-three. We had a pre-bid mandatory a mandatory pre-bid meeting with seven prospective bidders attending. And then ultimately, five proposals were received in October. Uh, this bid was based upon more like RFQ, like qualification-based, not a number-based. Um, so there was a lot of different aspects that the the staff went through. Each uh prospective bidder was evaluated on their ability, methodology, communication, quality control, project staffing. And cost proposals based upon some of their items that they would have to do for their work. Um, based upon the review of the five, they interviewed the top two, which was Parkwood Landscape out of Lancaster. And Stay Green out of Santa Clarita. Based upon the additional interview that they did, they determined that Parkwood was the most adequate staffing. Um, the best qualified for the project, and that's where we are awarding them.
It's gonna work, all right. I had a quick question.
Yes.
Does being local increase the score? Does that have anything to do with the score?
No, it does not.
So even the fact that they're they're local means they still came in more qualified?
Yes.
Being local had nothing to do with that?
Yes.
Okay, how's that?
I do want I do wanna clarify that we do have a local preference in our RFP process. And our award a a dollar amount of a certain percentage for local preference.
Right, no, I, no, we're definitely always local preference. I was just wondering if that equated into the score at all, but it looks like they truly are a a more qualified crowds to handle the job.
And and sorry if I missed it, but how many local jobs would this create?
How many local jobs? Oh, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine full-time, one.
Thirty-nine full-time local staff.
And for those of you who don't know, LMDs are landscape ma- maintenance districts, and you drive around neighborhoods. And you see the little strip of dirt, that's maybe maybe twelve.
Of landscaping, sir.
What's that? And there's trees and shrubs, and you always drive by and you wonder, hey, I wanna.
Who takes care of that?
Who takes care of those, who maintainses those, this is that contract.
This is that contract, along with our um the medians along any streets that we have, yes.
Cuz often residents will ask me, say, who takes care of that?
Well, I'd like to point out, though, that some of the more skilled technical jobs are done by our wonderful maintenance department.
Woo-hoo, yes.
Good job.
Thank you so much for that report. Um, I, so I know this contract has been a long time coming, uh and the it you guys went through some pretty strenuous negotiations with the contractor. Uh, so I just wanna say thank you to all city staff, to superintendent, to our labor leadership and our contractor for coming together. Uh, and putting together a really, really thorough scope of services and scope of work in this contract. Uh, you all did a great job, so congratulations. Um, I did notice uh that in the RFP, the request for proposals, in section thirteen. It says, quote, subcontracting is not allowed for this solicitation and resulting agreement. Um, and then also, the in the contract scope of services, the exhibit B, that that the team worked so hard to develop. It says specifically, quote, no subcontracting is allowed. Um, and then I I noticed that there is a provision uh in the the overarching contract. I believe that the city attorney approved as to form uh has a provision that allows for subcontracting. I I think, I I I'm not sure if Lynn, you have the answer to this. I know that the super- I know that the superintendent had some thoughts on it.
I have Paul Wood here, who is superintendent, so he could be able to answer.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, council. Paul Wood, landscape superintendent, I can help clarify on that. Uh, the subcontracting, uh we made an allowance uh for that in the traffic control uh section. Uh, in this new contract, there is uh compliance measures uh that are built into this contract. Um, and part of that uh requires uh traffic control uh per MUTCD. And some of these locations are going to require engineer traffic control plans to be approved. So we made an allowance for the contractor to uh be able to bring on a a traffic control contractor to uh.
Prepare the plan.
Prepare the plans and be able to carry out some of those.
Perfect, so thank you for that clarification. Um, so what I want, in light of their response and and um their preference to limit subcontractings uh solely to traffic control. I've drafted um and 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 the team has reviewed it, and I think they're all uh in support of the revised language. I've I've drafted these revisions, and I'll actually, I'll give you two. It it's it's simply to, there is a uh section three point two of the draft contract. Um, says the subcontractor can be used for anything for the completion of the agreement. Um, what I'm suggesting and what I'm um proposing, we revise it to read is strike for the completion of the agreement. And uh insert uh for the timely performance of traffic control obligations as set forth in the scope of services. And then leave the rest of it um as is, which also leaves any subcontract subcontractors to be subject to the review and approval. Uh, by our city team, so it just really refines it uh to the traffic control, which is, I think, the intent of the team. When you guys were 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 hashing this out in in terms of the scope of services, so.
It it's specific to only traffic control.
Perfect, so it I that that would be my motion is to adopt the uh to approve the contract with the proposed revision. That I have distributed to you colleagues. So, that's my motion.
I'll make a substitute motion that we approve the uh items presented by staff.
Do we have a second to my motion?
Can I can I clarify, just, god damn it. So, the subcontractor is specific to traffic control, but the contract doesn't clarify that it's specific to traffic control, correct?
Correct.
So, you as the superintendent with the union and uh you you see the amendment? And are you okay with that amendment?
Yes, we are.
Do you prefer that amendment?
We're in agreement with that amendment.
Okay, I'll second, uh.
Here, shall I ask a question? So would there ever be another need for another type of subcontractor? Like if you're doing landscaping and then vector control needs to come out and do something, would they be considered as subcontractors? I don't really know, that's why I'm asking. I don't know if there's other types of sub subcontractors besides traffic control that we would ever need. I guess my question is, is this limiting us to just traffic control, and then in the future, we might need another type of subcontractor? But because we don't specify it, it limits us and we can't? Is it better to be more general or to be more specific?
More specific to traffic control.
Well, I I would ask that question of council, because I don't know what this line actually does in the long term. In terms of restricting uh to this particular item that's being proposed.
Uh, well, it it does, as it says, it narrows it down. Um, this is the first we've heard of it, so uh it's a bit of a surprise, but we roll with things. If it's your pleasure to narrow it, that's fine. We use standard contract templates to save the city money. We don't go through and custom craft each one. We certainly can, if that's your pleasure. Um, this is standard, and should you wish to add this language, uh. Feel free, I mean, there there's no objection to it, but it does limit, in a sense, your future flexibility.
So I have a question. Um, during our briefings, I had brought up the idea of of possibly getting some of the um. Re- released uh people from the prison to do some some landscaping, to give them an opportunity to learn to do landscaping and and give them employment. I don't know if you guys remember that conversation or not, but you know, I I always think that it's it's best to train people. So they don't have to, you know, create recidivism in our community by providing them jobs, um such as landscaping, construction, that type of thing. If they brought on such a group to be trained as apprentices in landscaping, would they be considered subcontractors?
I wouldn't think so, uh they're they're an equal opportunity employer.
They hired them and put them on payroll and paid the appropriate wages and all of that, they would be.
I just wasn't sure how, cuz I didn't know how that would work, i- if they were learning and they were apprentices, it would be a special group. Um, it's something we were gonna talk about later, but I didn't, I wasn't expecting this tonight, so I.
Yeah, no, I just, let me just, if I can just sort of bring it back to the the sort of the. The core of the conversation, really, the amendment was not intended to sort of like open up the entire contract to renegotiations. It was really to reflect the the meeting of the minds of the parties of the city and the contractor. When they sat down, they all came to agreement that there were gonna be no subs. And and the only reason they would ever um uh utilize subcontractors would be specific to traffic control. So this is just simply to, um, so that the the contract is consistent with the scope of services that the team. Um, you know, worked so hard to put together, as well as the notice for uh request for proposals, so that it's all consistent. And everybody's all on the same page as to who who and what can do.
All right, so.
Let me just clarify where I'm going to suppo- support her amendment, because. The contract was negotiated with the maintenance team, with the landscape team, with the union, everybody was involved, right? So the first question is, is giving this high-dollar award taking away jobs from our own maintenance? Are these jobs they want? And the answer is, not right now, that they're overworked, there's more technical jobs that they're focused on. But this contract has so much teeth and so much thought went into it that they could start peeling back those jobs. So the intent was to be very specific, to not let subcontractors in, except for traffic control. So if our intent is to be specific, to give the maintenance team, landscape team, the union, what they're looking for. I'm going to second the motion, cuz it just makes sense.
Okay, so this is just pertaining to traffic control. Would this be helpful, have we done this in some of our other contracts before, where um generally, this isn't their primary service is traffic control? They're obviously a maintenance company, traffic control is something they deal with as secondary. Would this be helpful in in them executing their contract and performing on time with accuracy?
Abs- absolutely.
So we have a staff recommendation, you guys are on board with this, you think it's it's a good thing?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, in the best interest of the city, if if the staff has support on that, and I'm hearing a motion and second, I'd be willing to ask our mayor to pretend.
So Lynn, are you in?
Yes.
See, uh, my concern uh with this is that um I know that the staff works diligently and works with uh. With everybody involved in this kind of situation, and then to have something come in at the last second. Uh, it's always concerning to me, because a lot of work goes into preparing, into the negotiations, and trying to work every single detail out. That's not to say it's perfect, but uh instead of having something land on the desk while we're considering it. It might have been appropriate to submit this to the city attorney for review, to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences. I'll support it, because you're in support of it, but we ought to stop legislating from the dais, is the point I'm making.
I think that's what we're supposed to do, that's what the Brown Act requires us to legislate from the dais, but in any case.
Well, uh, my my suggestion is that you submit something like this to the city attorney for legal impact. And try to make uh sure that no unintended consequences flow from such a change, and I call for the question.
Okay, so you're gonna rescind your substitute motion?
Yeah, yeah, it's been.
Okay, until we have a motion in a second, let's move forward with the vote, do we uh vote in the computer? There we go.
Start voting.
All right.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much unanimously. We're gonna have some clean LMDs. And some center dividers while we're at it. And some center dividers while we're at it.
Can I just highlight that uh that was the one agenda item pulled? We approve six point eight with the rest of the consent calendar, that is the wellbeing lab, Louis, congratulations.
Hopefully more.
All right. That takes us to item number seven, that's a public hearing, adopt a resolution, uh CC twenty twenty four dash oh seventeen. Resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale denying appeal twenty dash zero 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 two, upholding the planning commission resolution. PC twenty twenty four zero zero one to deny general plan amendment twenty three zero zero one. Zone change twenty three zero 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 two and specific plan amendment twenty two zero zero one. I think we're still working out some of the the kinks on this one and having ongoing discussions. With them, can we have a uh may I ask for a motion in a second to continue this item?
I move to continue the item.
Second.
Motion and second. And vote and post.
Start voting. Motion passes.
Thank you, do we need to have a public hearing if we uh continue the item? Okay, thank you, all right. Item number eight, council reports, announcements and requests for future agenda items, I'm gonna start over to my right this time. What's that? No, I'll start, I'll I'll mix it up.
Let's see, so my informational report uh has been electronically submitted to the clerk. And it reflects that I participated in, I believe it's fifteen events in the month of February. All of which were amazing, including the Together California Village groundbreaking, uh which is uh the gem and um. Uh, something that we're very much looking forward to in council district five. Uh, a housing facility for foster youth and transitional age use, so we're we're excited about that. Um, in terms of future agenda items, there are two things that I'd like to request um that be added to our future agenda. Or a future agenda. I've requested to be updated on uh various matters and city attorney Curly has repeatedly refused to share any information with me on. Pretty much anything, um he's told me to quote, accept my limited role as a council member, and he said he would. Quote, be instructing staff to disregard any and all requests from me. Now, that in and of itself, I believe exceeds scope of his authority, because of course, as an elected official. Um, I'm entitled to information that affects my district, that affects the city budget and other policy matters. Uh, but these two specific items are of great importance to the city because they have legal ramifications that could affect changes in existing city policies. And or affect our budget. Um, so if we're like potentially looking at big settlement payouts, that's information we should know. As council members, it's our responsibility to approve or reject settlement agreements. And to make decisions on things as they make their way through the legal process. So we've got to be informed about legal issues as they arise. It's so important that we be given that information on the front end at the beginning of the process, not just at the end. When we're having settlement discussions, but uh and and that's exactly why the Brown Act specifically calls for. And allows for closed session discussions on items pertaining to anticipated litigation. Or when there is quote, significant exposure to litigation. But unfortunately, Curly has refused to do so, so I would like to request that we as a council move to add two items to a future closed session agenda. First, the Clinton Boomer matter. And second, the car accident which either killed or critically injured a child in December. I still don't know what happened to her because the city attorney won't tell me. Um, we've not had one council discussion on either item, and I think it's important that we do so. So I respectfully request and ask that mayor and colleagues use support adding those two items to future closed session agendas. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric.
Okay, um, I have my report right here that will be filed with the clerk. Sorry for not doing that advance of this meeting, uh just a couple of things I wanna highlight. Uh, once again, I met with representatives from Mike Garcia's office and Judy Chu's office to discuss. Reopening the Little Rock Creek Dam Air Recreation Area, I think that that is moving along. I'm quite happy with uh both offices' commitment to help us do so. Uh, at the last council meeting, we discussed Together California Groundbreaking, the Foster Youth Village that's being created in Palmdale. They keep foster siblings together, but it's worth mentioning again because that is such a fantastic program. And a complete necessity to the Antelope Valley that has such a high foster youth rate. It's gonna be uh transformational for city of Palmdale, but mostly those families' lives. Um, I've been attending a lot of uh coffee for vets, there's a couple of veteran coffee. Happening throughout the week, I've attended uh several coffee with the cops, I've had a lot of coffee this month. So if you need to talk with me, please do not invite me to coffee. Other than that, I will file my report with the clerk.
All right, thank you very much, Eric. Richard, you're up.
I have a, my report didn't get filed as well, um, but I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee meeting. Uh, the Palmdale School District Foundation's Sixth Angle Gala. That raised quite a bit of money for the foundation, there was good participation there. On February seventh, every uh first Wednesday of the month, we have Spanish uh talk uh radio, I uh I did that. Um, the Together California Groundbreaking that's been mentioned, uh February seventh, regular council meeting. Uh, that same day, when the first Wednesday of the month is a long day for an old guy. Because we started seven thirty in the morning with the Palmdale Boosters and uh our president is here, Mr. Ventura, right there in the audience. Uh, so we start there, uh and I did meet uh with with the boosters uh that day. Uh, the then we had the swearing in of the Palmdale Water District Board of Directors, uh I was very. Uh pleased that Cynthia Sanchez uh was uh sworn in as a director at the Palmdale Water District. I think she's extremely well qualified and is a great addition to that board. Um, we had a meeting with the Main Street Coalition in a continuing effort to deal with um drive through. Uh, locations in the city of Palmdale under our new uh codes. I also attended the AVQMD Board of Directors meeting uh on February twentieth. I did attend in downtown Los Angeles the Executive Committee of Regional Homeless Alignment. And that is significant because we're trying to um. Equalize the imbalance in the amount of money that is provided for homeless. To Spa One, which is here, this district and uh Antelope Valley, as compared, for example, to downtown LA. The disparity is just shocking and uh, so that's a point that I I bring forth at the Blue Ribbon Commission downtown. Uh, and I and I seek to advertise, I mean to advocate that uh. That that disparity needs to be addressed by the county, because we do have a significant and ever growing homeless problem. Uh unhoused problem here in Antelope Valley. If you go along the fourteen freeway, going from Palmdale Boulevard, northbound towards Lancaster. You will see that in Almergo's Creek, there are numerous encampments there now and along the freeway. And I'm not blaming those folks, they're trying to get out of the cold, but we need the funds equally distributed in this county. So that we here in Palmdale, Lancaster and in the areas of the Los Angeles County. Uh, give us the means to address that ever growing problem, it is a problem of human suffering. And we're not being treated fairly in this area, so I intend to to be as strong of an advocate as I possibly can on that committee. Um, on the twenty sixth, uh Supervisor Barker did come up here, congratulations to her on a great victory last night. She does not have to face an election in November because she got more than fifty percent of the vote, but she was up here. Uh, with representative from Palmdale Regional Medical Center, psychologists and psychiatrists and our staff here. To address the issue of mental health and what to do with the budgeting that we already have. And to work a coalition with County of Los Angeles and uh the city of Lancaster to try to address that in a regional way. Uh, the issue of uh mental health, as we have talked about tonight, is something that the city is committed to trying to deal with. Um, I attended the AVTA Board of Directors meeting and uh along with the rest of my council members here. The Desert Sands Playground Ribbon Cutting, and it was noted that today at the AV Edge. Uh luncheon that took place regarding everything that's going on uh in AV. That it is one of the most significant things that the city council can do to provide for the children. And 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 we did that by the groundbreaking on February twenty eighth of the Desert Sands Playground Ribbon Cutting. And it's it's a beautiful uh example of a playground, a great example of how money ought to be. Uh expended so that we can bring that uh joy to the children. So that's the Desert Sands Playground, if you haven't been by there, check it out, and the kids are having a wonderful time, thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Hello, um, so this has been a very, very busy month for me, um, I know that this isn't a. We're we're supposed to be able to talk to you guys about things that we've attended at taxpayers' expense. I have um nineteen or twenty items on my list here that I've I've done this month. But I'd like like to just talk about some of them that really weren't at taxpayers' expense, but are kinda interesting, so I wanna share them. Um, we talked, uh actually, I attended the LA County Sanitation Districts for both fourteen and twenty. Um, there might be some changes made um coming up with both of those districts. Uh, did attend the Skechers grand opening on February ninth, that was fun, and if you guys haven't been there, please go by. It's one of our our new businesses, and if you love Skechers, they're very, very comfortable shoes, I wear them all the time, in fact, I have them on now. Um, I was not able to attend the uh foster care groundbreaking, because I was working, because I I do have a daytime job. Uh, but I hear it was a wonderful event. Um, I as attended the Association of Sister Cities fundraiser at Firehouse Subs um the ninth. Uh, February tenth, I did the Parks and Rec Recreation Love Rocks Crafts at Dominic Masori. Um, my family are a bunch of rock people, we've painted rocks and hidden them at um. What are they called, rest areas throughout the United States, so you one day might pick up a rock, be, you know, that was painted by me or one of my family members. Uh, that's fun, if you don't know what that is, go ahead and Google it. Um, I met with a few cons constituents and um some very, very wonderful people in our community. On February thirteenth, um I was notified that there had been a theft at the Palmdale Pony League East Side. Um, their conics containers have gotten broken into at at um McAdam Park. So they got, they had some loss and they have opening day coming up this Saturday. So I went ahead and cut a check to them to help compensate them for the loss from their conics containers getting uh broken into. So hopefully that will help reimburse them for some of their um their stuff that they got stolen. I did the desert cleanup uh on February seventeenth, and that was at Seventieth R, Seventy, Seventieth and R. And the amazing things you find out there, just not just vehicles, but I think there was a Sea Dew out there and some water. Watercraft, I'm like, how does it get out in the middle of the desert? But it was fascinating how many, how many pieces of cars there were out there, so I might have to look into that. Uh, where, when I wear another hat and see what's going on out there. Um, I also did the season of service on the seventeenth for the assembling of the Spring Fest crafts. That, those are things that are gonna be passed out to the kids at our um Easter event or spring event, whatever you wanna call it. So I hope that you guys can attend that too, it's coming up. Um, met with another constituent, uh talked about educational opportunities here in the Alt Valley and uh when we're gonna get the Chimboli Center back. Because there is a need for some adult education and some special needs education that we used to hold at Chimboli, and we'd like to have those classes back. On February twenty seventh, um I attended the Books and Barks at Palmdale Library, if you have not done that, I hope that you will. This is where they have therapy dogs that come and the kids could read to them, and it helps the kids to learn to read because the dogs don't care if they miss a word. Um, it is a a five oh three uh CE nonprofit, so in order to keep that organization going. I also, out of my discretionary funds, cut a check to them to keep the 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 uh, I think it's called Pet Pals. Is their their nonprofit, so I made sure that they got some money to keep that organization going, so the kids can continue to read to them. Um, I attended the Desert Sands Playground Ribbon Cutting, that was beautiful, um and it is also for uh people with special needs. So if you have kids that have special needs or kids that have sensory issues. It's a great opportunity for them to be able to go out and play and have a good time. Um, and nothing's metal, so nothing's hot, which is nice. Then I also attended the briefing on the animal feasibility study on February twenty ninth. Where we talked about ways that we can enhance or improve uh our our pet population here in the Antelope Valley. How to make sure that animals are being spayed, neutered, cared for and vaccinated and shipped, not just through animal uh care and control. But perhaps we can come up with a, like a satellite option that we can do to assist our residents. I think, I think that's mostly what I wanted to talk about, that's the highlights anyways, so that's what I've done. And I will submit this um online, in fact, I'm sorry, I'll pass that down to you guys, so you guys have a copy. There you go, it was a busy month for me.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, mayor, can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Since council, uh mayor pro tem Loa mentioned Catherine Barker, I forgot on Friday, I met Catherine Barker for coffee. I just wanted to highlight, uh she did give another half a million dollars for the Center of Transportation Excellence. That money was matched by Metro to continue to move along this project in Palmdale. I asked if it would be helpful for the city of Palmdale to also contribute, and uh we were asked uh to pick a more strategic time. The the money is in the Metro account, Metro's an eight billion dollar a year entity, uh it's better for us to hold on to that interest at the moment. But uh I reaffirm to her uh our collective commitment to that project.
Awesome, thank you for keeping an eye on that, as you can see, we've been busy, uh our councils had had a extremely busy February. I attended a lot of those same events, uh I have my. Um memorandum here of all the events I attended, I will turn that in as well. There's one event I attended that's not on this list that I wanted to point out, it was a wall mural project that took place a couple of weeks ago. It's the first lowrider wall mural ever painted in the Antelope Valley, it's right here across the street, it's on Andy's Auto Parts, it's Eight Street East. And Palmdale Boulevard, so if you get a chance, check it out, it's the first of three wall murals that this particular group is gonna be doing in our city. Uh, very exciting, it's part of our arts program, they're really helping beautify our city. And they're reaching out to community groups and making the wall murals personalized with the community, so it's just not a random piece of artwork. It actually has relevance to the community groups, so it's it's really cool and I'm looking forward to seeing the other two. Uh, yeah, a lot of the same stuff, I'll point out Desert Sands Playground Ribbon Cutting, since it was in District One. Thank you for the staff, thank you, Measure AB, thank you, taxpayer, and thank you, council members, for each one of you being there to support District One. So I will turn that in, with that, I'm gonna move on to item number nine, our city manager's report.
Wait, mayor, um before we move on, um can we determine if we can garner consensus on adding. My two items to future agenda items?
With that, I'm gonna ask, maybe because it's sensitive in nature, we asked that the city manager pull the council members offline.
Is that our our. What's it called, our our rules of order for meetings that you guys recently adopted, section. Section nine D say that we need to establish a, place an item on a future agenda by a majority consensus. Uh, of the council. And that the request or motion requires a second and is non debatable, so it has to happen here.
I figured since we're having a performance evaluation with the city attorney tonight, that. We can see what happens with that, and then depending on what happens with that, we can have the city manager pull the council to see which direction we wanna go from there.
But those are two completely different issues, performance evaluation of an an employee is one thing. Consideration of two legal matters is an entirely different thing. I just, I I haven't been apprised of anything, I was told in the emails that I would be equally apprised as all council members. If you guys know more about these things than I do, that's another issue. I just, it's been months that I've been asking for these these conversation about these things to happen. The Clinton Boomer family, for instance, had a press conference saying that they were going to sue us, I would like to get a staff support on that, I I mean.
Okay, let me see, let me refer to the city attorney or city manager, whichever one, to make sure that we handle this correctly, I don't know the. Just because of the sensitive nature of those topics.
Uh, uh, there there is a standard process that the city's following.
Should I leave?
Yeah, now, you don't need.
Okay.
There there's a standard process and protocol that has been followed for probably as long as you've been a city. At the right time, when the council has a role, needs to be informed and make decisions, I will bring it to you. Right now, that is in a preliminary. Right now, that is in a preliminary state. There, there's really nothing to report. Uh council doesn't need to give direction. There's nothing we need to know. Uh these cases are maturing, if you will. We don't run in every matter, I'll say prematurely. Uh and so at the right time, you all will be informed. We will have a closed session. Um there's an old saying about getting ahead of your skis. We, we have a process. And again, when you need to be involved, your council role isn't uh suggesting litigation advice or strategy. It is ultimately to give direction when needed. Uh and you will be asked to do that.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, I I come from aerospace, which of course has security clearances. And we know there's different levels of security clearances and it came down to the right to know, the need to know, the want to know. And I think that's kind of what I'm hearing you say is that there are certain roles and we're not there yet.
E- exactly.
Okay.
You're not being withheld. You just, there's really nothing for you to do other than curiosity and that, that's really kind of an inefficient process.
Mayor, if I may, um facts are facts. If there was an accident in December, I think it's within our purview to know whether the child is alive or critically injured or, I mean, if if a red flag is raised and and an accident happened, the facts are what they are. That's not privileged information. The facts are what they are. It's, should we know about that? Do we, it, it, event happened in December. It is now March. I still don't know what happened to this child. I think in order for us to be able to make policy determinations, to to think through and evaluate current existing policies and how maybe we can um amend and revise those policies to avoid, um to potentially avoid any of uh, you know, future incidents uh that are similar or dangerous. Uh I don't, but I, the thing is, I don't know because we haven't been, I haven't been told anything about it other than there was an accident and somebody was injured or maybe, maybe died. And then I was told, I'll let you know, and then I didn't know.
Talking about, you're way ahead of me because I have no clue what you're talking about.
Well, you were on the email chain. It was a, it was a, it was an email to all five of us saying the, 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 raise, raise the red flag at late at night, saying that there was an accident. A, a thirteen year old was injured or died or something. And then I said, okay, can you give me a status report the next day? No, no answer. Can't tell you. Not going to tell you. Uh I, can you please let me know what the status is? You'll, you need, the quote was, you needn't ask. I will tell you. And it's now March and I have no idea what's going on with this, this family, the, 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 the city uh personnel who, who may or may not have been involved. It's, it's all preliminary, just so that we can have a conversation in, in closed session about the matter. This is not anything that's out of the ordinary or in violation of law. That's what the Brown Act contemplated when it allowed for closed session items to be agendized when there is potential or anticipated litigation or there is reasonable exposure to litigation.
So in my experience of being on council for almost eight years, usually the city attorney's office brings it to the city council when it's so-called ripe for discussion. It seems like that may or may not be the case. However, maybe you want to provide a report. I don't know all of the details.
That is exactly the case. Uh there is still a, a lot of investigation being done. There's still a lot of, of process. There isn't really anything, again, to report. Counsel.
Is she alive?
Counsel.
I'd like to know.
Would consider policies if there was, city manager saw a need for policy change, insurance or what have you, that would be brought to you. This is essentially, uh that's an auto accident. They happen all the time. Um why there needs to be a, a need to insert oneself in prematurely i- is unclear to me. Um so, but again, at the right time, things will be done.
Right, and I think we'd all be more than willing to have that discussion. I'll defer to my, uh to the other council members to see where they lay on it. If they're ready to give any kind of consensus on this or or if they want to uh give us some more time to play out. Counsel?
I think, I think the city attorney has spoken on this thing and has given appropriate direction at this time. Uh maybe there's a want to know as one of the three levels pointed out.
Does, does nobody else care what happened to this kid?
Gee whiz, can I finish my comment? I think the city attorney has given appropriate direction here and I think we ought to leave it at that.
It's, it's not that I don't care about what happened in this incident, but I have reason to believe that you have a per, a personal or financial relationship with the attorneys representing the victims in both of those cases. So that's why I'm not going to second this and I suggest we just move on.
Okay, so with that.
If that were the case, I would obviously recuse myself, but that's actually not true. So if you're going to make an allegation, at least make it be factual.
So let's move on to the city manager's report. Didn't have consensus, so. City manager press.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and uh community. As council stated, we've been very busy the last few weeks. Um and I, one item I just wanted to bring to your attention that actually happened last week was our disaster preparedness expo that we held at Legacy Commons. Uh rave reviews, congratulations to any of the staff that had anything to do with that and all of our community partners that came out to educate our community on what to do in the event of an emergency and more importantly, what to do in advance of an emergency. So uh resounding success. I think that'll come back year after year. Um tons of positive feedback. It was, it was really great to hear from everyone. Upcoming, we have the Women's Symposium on March ninth uh that will be held at Legacy Commons as well. This is the third year that we will host that event. We've got a seasons of service um on March sixteenth, two different opportunities to get involved and you can visit our website to learn more about those. And we're also in partnership with AVBoga, uh which is actually one of the programs that came out of the first Wellbeing Cohort. Uh they will be doing their third Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Event on March sixteenth. I do want to slow down just for a moment, if I may, and make some larger announcements and updates for the good of the council as well as the community. Um I hear people starting to talk about Chimbole, so I think it's time to give a little bit of an update. We have engaged an architect to look at Chimbole as well as our library area, as well as the north end of this building and give us some conceptual about bringing that back. Um as of right now, there seems to be some general consensus on council. Uh we will provide them a, a rendering that we bring back the top of the Chimbole Center as a community gathering space and maybe some additional expansion of the library on the bottom part and some other things like that. So it is moving forward for anybody that has questions. Um and in the next uh month or so, we'll be bringing forward, for council's consideration, some digital park signs outside of a couple of our different parks so we can do some more advertisement and promotion of city events and things like that. Uh Yellen Park is on its course to be finished in um November of twenty twenty four, so everything is going well there. We're about forty percent complete. Parking lots are basically done. Uh building is starting to go up. Uh I think I mentioned this at the last council meeting as well. In partnership with Ghetto Film School, we're very excited to be using our film stage uh for the week of the twenty fifth through the twenty ninth of March to put together a program with students to put um to bring them into the space. This is a, a program that is done in New York, London, Los Angeles, and now the city of Palmdale. Um to give these artists an opportunity to put some material together that will then we can turn around and and promote our community with. Um and then last but not least, uh during our last council meeting, when we approved the mid-year budget, it kind of got glossed over. And I want to point out to the public that in the mid-year budget, we also approved three additional bodies for graffiti. Uh those are coming out of uh our, our city budget. And that will, in addition to the recently purchased third graffiti truck, this will give us a team in every single district in the city and the opportunity to have a roving team to address graffiti in the public right of way. So um we are working very hard. Uh we understand and council's committed to removing blight. And uh we are soon to have tripled our efforts in graffiti in the last twelve months, so um watch for that. Uh give us sixty days to get everybody up to speed and everything functioning and then let's, let's uh reassess. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very positive report and thank you, city manager. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work you do. All right. Item number ten, non-agenda public comments. City clerk, do we have anybody waiting to speak?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
All right. Eugene, you're up.
Uh first of all, I don't understand why every meeting they have to read the riot act for, uh you know, it, it's right here, all the rules of speaking. Why do you have to take five minutes out of this meeting to read that? At the same time, you take away one minute of our, of our ability to speak on public comments. That's not right. Second of all, regarding uh the Department of Public Works, I want to find out why you have destroyed uh thirty to forty parking spaces in front of the library. As I understand it, there were supposed to be EV charging stations there, right? Well, if you were, if the, the Public Works was ready to put in the public, uh the, these charging station, they should have held off. But parents and people who want to use a library have that fewer parking spaces. And you know, just like in the past, when I complained about Avenue R, the, the mile-long trench that was never done for a, a year and a half or the big hole on Twenty Street East and Cable View, you know, this is something that should be resolved by the city. Uh second of all, I think that um the tur, they should, you should terminate the, the contract of Curly because of his ineptness. I don't know if Williamis Curly one and two are just as inept, but you should terminate his contract. Let him go back to his normal job, ringing brothers as a circus clown because he's very inept, very corrupt and should not represent the city. I, I've been speaking before the city since the days of Jim Ledford. And I have never seen a attorney that is so corrupt, double billing the city and, and you're allowing him to do that. It should be, his contract should be terminated as soon as possible.
Next speaker?
We have Michael Ross and after Michael Ross, we have Vivian Reed.
Uh good evening. Um just a couple of real quick things. Decaf, it's really good. I switched to decaf years ago. Help me out, brother. I'm just saying. Uh I applaud you guys on all that you do for our community. You are doing a great job. Um we uh put out to you guys a few months ago this thing about uh concern doing town halls with people. We'd like to revisit that with you guys at some point. Uh you're making, you, you meet with people all the time and we get that, but we feel like um if you were to have town hall meetings in each district, that would go a long way so that we could actually talk instead of just talking to you, it would be great to sit down and talk with you. I've talked with most of you at a lunch or whatever and they're always really great. I would love to see that happen more uh in each of our communities. We presented you with a possible ordinance that we could put in play that could go on in the future to help uh get the communication down lower into the community. And I think I was reading on the Wellbeing Institute today and what they do and it's right up their alley too. It's the same idea. So we want that ripple effect to be able to work into each one of our districts and be able to have a voice uh where, and you know what? I'm telling you right now, I would volunteer and I know I can get volunteers to help put that together so it wouldn't really impact the city too hard. Um Mr. Curly, I think you do a great job. Just want to say that. Uh I listen to all the stuff that you, uh in your meetings and stuff and you educate us very well. Thank you for your hard work. Last thing, really quick, um the Human Rights Advisory Committee is an abomination in our city. If you guys are watching their uh meetings, they do absolutely nothing. And the stuff that they're coming up with, there's so much going on in our world and, and the things that they're talking about. I learned so much just paying attention to you educating on how to run a meeting and they argued with them the whole time. I think you should consider dissolving that.
All right, next speaker?
I fled here. I'm just, I'm not sure if this is the exact, it's the first time I've ever been here. I fled um the Tehachapi area for my husband, who did over a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage to my face. I am being stalked continuously slash tires. It's, there's a list of things. My doctor has made several APS re- reports in my behalf. At the Lancaster Sheriff's Department, I was assaulted and robbed in the parking lot and they won't even take a report. Actually, they called me Calamity Jane. I asked them if they had video of the assault. Oh, we can't tell you that, ma'am. I have been, you know, I fled that community to another community that has actually really, I feel like I'm being, you know, all over again. I'm, I'm, I'm just being, uh I can't even make a police report. I've been to the Palmdale Sheriff's Department many times, Lancaster Sheriff's Department many times. And um, you know, I just have had it. I don't know where I'm going to start with this. I'm going to keep coming to meetings to find out why is it I can't make a police report? Why is it my doctor can't make a police report for me? Okay, I had a hundred thousand dollars stolen out of my bank account not too long ago. And uh today, you know, they just keep refusing to take a report for me on uh, my doctor made a report on February seventeenth. And I got calls, three calls so far, and they're not going to make a report on my behalf. And I want to know why. You know, a hundred thousand dollars out of your account, that's a lot of money, okay? It was by a family member, but it doesn't matter. I'm on the point of being homeless, okay? I'm retired from County of Kern. I am a social worker. I'm very familiar with NAMI. I used to work in K. And I've had it. I, I've had it with the police department here.
S- Sarah and Deputy Hill, can, can you get, yeah, can you help her? Thank you very much.
Antelope Valley Chambers of Commerce?
Yeah. Hi, Vicky.
Hi. Okay, good evening, Bishop, Mayor Bishop. I heard you like to be called that, so. My name is Vicky Ventura. I am the CEO of the Allo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate that today has been declared as Women's History Month. We appreciate that so much. Um and we will, uh the Allo Valley Chamber of Commerce will be honoring Women's History Month this coming up March thirteenth, our monthly luncheon. Um it's going to be our Conferencia de la Mujer, a women's conference. So we are hoping that some of you will be able to attend to support this initiative to celebrate women. Men are welcome too, so we hope to see you there. Okay? Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Vicky, what time will that be?
Huh?
What time?
It starts at eleven o'clock AM at the Hillac Center. Yeah.
All right.
Visit AVchambers.org and you'll find.
You'll definitely see Eric there.
Thank you. Thank you, Vicky.
Yes, I think that's what she said. Yeah.
I have no more speaker cards.
What was the date? March thirteenth. Definitely sent Eric. I definitely sent Eric. Hi, Marsha.
Hello, my name is Marsha. The agenda tonight states, under the heading Public Comment Rules, that this meeting will follow the California Government Code Section five four nine five four dash three, better known as the Brown Act, concerning our opportunity to speak. The paragraph in the, in this agenda that starts in furtherance of that section specific specifies the time allotted per person to speak in addition to the topics that are bundled together for the allotted timeframe. If you refer to the Brown Act, you will find that there is no mention of specific minutes allotted for speakers other than the double those minutes for people using translators. Also, there is no mention of agenda topics and the need or requirement of of clumping them together in order to restrict the public's comment time. By increasing, by including the in furtherance paragraph in the agenda, you imply that these specific minutes and the joining of topics are hardwired in the Brown Act. In fact, no topic such as consent calendar appointments, new business or closed sessions is even mentioned. I would like to be given the opportunity to speak on each issue on the agenda. I shouldn't have to pick and choose between per, uh important subjects that will directly affect me as a citizen of Palmdale. Please note, you don't have to choose a subject or have a time limit. As a citizen of Palmdale. Please note, you don't have to choose a subject or have a time limit.
Alright, do we have any other speakers?
I have no more speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay. That takes us to presentation by city attorney, item number eleven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have under section eleven, eleven point one through eleven point six. They are all properly agendized and with that, you can recess to closed session at your convenience.
Before we do that, on I, uh, clarification on item eleven point two, will that also include a conversation about the? The counter suit?
No, ma'am.
So I can participate in this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, ready to go. City Attorney, report back, please.
For uh, eleven point one, direction was given, but no reportable action. On the remainders, council was updated, but no reportable action, sir. Back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting to March twentieth, right here at the Palmdale City. The cha- the council chambers. We'll see you then, five PM. Thank you and have a good night.